It's February 12th.
Did they sell it?
Frank County Commission meeting to order.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Chair Harris?
Present.
Vice Chair Metter?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Take the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Nathan, new pastor in town. I want to thank you for a chance to lead in this invocation. And I have for you a thought, a psalm, and a prayer. Someone once said that even if it lasts a lifetime, it's still temporary. And in light of the snow outside, a select reading from Psalm 51. Have mercy on me, O God, according to your steadfast love. Wash me, and I shall be whiter than snow. Let me hear joy and gladness. Create in me a clean heart, O God. Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our transgressions, as we forgive those who transgress against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, both now and forever. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Correspondence? Public comment? Considered tender, we have approval Frank County minutes on February 5th. I have approval.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Items of business is considered approval on the Frank County emergency operation.
I don't think I could have chose a better day. Before you consider your approval, KSA 48929, little d, requires that every county in the state has to have an emergency operations plan to be approved by the state of Kansas every five years. Our exploration was February of last year, and I've been, this has been my pet project for the entire year, nights and weekends and whatnot. It's 270 pages of light reading. Got to go through it with a lot of our department heads and whatnot. Talks about our roles and responsibilities if we were to occur a disaster, or if we were to declare a disaster. Also within that is the local recovery plan, which kind of goes into that aspect of after we've responded, and how do we recover from that? And we've had a recovery team that's been put in place since '22, I believe. Is that right there? Twenty-two?
That's right.
Yeah. And that's just kind of talks about how we will, what we will do with the group of people that we'll bring together if we have to recover. Because when the EMS, the fire departments, and everybody leaves and stuff like that, the houses are still a mess and whatnot. How do we recover from that? How do we build back and do it correctly? So. The estate went through my plan. I actually got the plan to them back in December, but they finally got back to me about end of January, and then they had one more correction for me, which turned out not to being a correction at all. I just had to explain it to them. And then they approved it on February 5th with their Kansas planning standard. That's the latest standard that they have in place. And after going through my plan and talking with them, they want me to be on the committee to revise the standards the next time around. So. Kudos to me, I guess. Spent a lot of time with this. So if you have any questions on what the plan is or things like that, feel free to ask.
I guess the only question that probably don't affect our local, if FEMA would go away.
There is no process in place for that. And how FEMA kind of works, so if we're looking at the Stafford Act, then that's kind of what we're talking about as public assistance. So the Stafford Act says that we will declare a local disaster, and we will respond the same way. How we get funded from that, I don't know how they would, how they'll change that if they were to change the Stafford Act funding. So right now, we go to the state, and the state, we have to meet our threshold of public non-insured damage, which our threshold's $120,000 of public non-insured damage for public assistance. After we breach that threshold, the state has to breach their threshold of 5.5 million public non-insured damage. How we, how that would look paying out? Because a lot of times, we don't get a lot of FEMA people running around looking at some stuff. We used to, but they've kind of gone to this state-led disaster thing, where the federal government just basically pays it out through a portal. And that's how we did, that's how we got the last one, the 2.2 million, was everything was done through the grants portal. So I don't know, if they do away with that, I don't know what that would look like, quite honestly.
Do we need a motion on this then?
You have to approve it?
They're approving a resolution, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Thanks, Rod.
Second is Pat Steele, approval of rezoning application 2408-0019-Sink.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Okay, so I've got, starting off, Mr. Sink, commonly known as 3853 Iowa Road. This is roughly four miles northwest of Ottawa. They are requesting to rezone three acres off of a 26-acre tract. Three acres will go to R3A, while the remaining 23 acres will stay in the A2 district. We have a letter from Rule Water 1 to provide water. We also have a letter from Water Systems Engineering showing that the soils meet the standards for an in-ground system. The land is to be sold or given to a family member. After staff presentation, there was no significant conversation based on staff findings. Staff and Planning Commission unanimously voted for recommend of approval.
Any questions? There are motion on 2408-0019-Sink?
Motion to approve?
In it.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Consider approval of rezoning application 2408-0015-Barnes.
All right, yes, commonly known as 3394 Reno Road, roughly two and a half miles to the northeast of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone 30 acres to the A2 district. The remaining 208 will continue to stay in the A1 district. The purpose for this applicant to purchase the farmstead, and later will acquire the rest of the farmland. The applicant currently farms the land on a lease agreement. The farmstead has everything that the, as far as utilities, that is needed for the house. And Staff and Planning Commission unanimously voted for recommendation of approval.
Questions? Motion on 2408-0015-Barnes?
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. Considered approval entering a contract to sell on the Crestview property.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. As the five of you know, we had our public auction for Crestview yesterday. Five people signed up to place bids, though only two ended up bidding. High bid ended up being $227,000. That was from a company called A-Tech Services. Obviously, had not heard of that company prior to yesterday. I've only had, you know, I've only done a couple hours of due diligence, but haven't found anything concerning about it. They've done development work, currently doing development work in Lawrence. So happy to answer any questions that you have. I don't have a contract for sale here, but I have one very close. So the question would be, do you authorize me, or do you authorize the sale at $227,000 pending the contract? If you want to see the contract, can absolutely have that in front of you next week. They did agree to go ahead and just, rather than, they had no issue leasing the building to the Historical Society, and had indicated that they would just prefer to pay the utilities on that building for however long that they're there. So I don't anticipate there being, so that's how I'm going to draft the contract. As I sit here today, I don't foresee issues, but of course, it's a real estate transaction, so.
If they have a use in mind for it that's not approved by the city, does that make a difference? They still own it, and they still have to figure out what to do with it?
Yeah, and that was explained to them, and the contract will state that too, that, I mean, I let them know that once the county sells this building, the county's kind of out of the picture. This is subject to the City of Ottawa zoning regulations. And talking to the individual, he did not, at least that he was willing to disclose, he did not have one specific use in mind. He indicated that it could be a variety of things based on what the city is willing to do and what the community wants.
Awesome.
Any more questions for Derek? We need a motion on this then?
Yeah, so.
Take care of the contract to get everything summed up?
It would be, yeah, the motion would be to approve entering a contract for sale of Crestview to A-Tech Services in the amount of $227,000. And then if you're good with that, then that's the motion, and then you would just authorize me to execute the contract. I've already talked with Crouchers there. A-Tech seems okay using them. I think we've got our ducks in a row here, so.
So do we have the motion to sell Crestview for $227,000?
I'll make the motion to approve entering into a contract for sale of the Crestview property to A-Tech Services in the amount of $227,000, and giving the county counselor permission to execute that contract?
Second?
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes. All right, it'd be staff reports.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. There, as you can see, we've got several public work staff in here today. Couple of discussions I want to have, and I'll turn it over to them respectively. I want to talk about propane, got pegged here. First, I want to talk about trucks. As you know, we've been trying to get two trucks and have not gotten them yet. And as Jeff will explain, we've pivoted to where at this point, we're asking the board to consider us buying five trucks, because we believe we can get them. Unfortunately, the specs are different, but as Jeff and presumably Kirk will come up and explain, we feel that's the better of two not ideal options. And talking with Janet, we believe that financially, we can do it. It'll squeeze us a little bit, but we've been squeezed before, and this is before we're even talking about equipment reserve funds. So it is doable, but Jeff, I'll let you jump in now.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Derek. And he did put the general overview of what we're dealing with. I do want to thank Kirk. He's done a lot of legwork on these in the past for me, and he's got a lot of information. But I'm going to try to give you as much information on how we got here as I can, and then we'll answer any questions that you have. When Dave was here, we actually did purchase and sign a contract with MHC to purchase two trucks that were up to our spec. That spec was with a Cummins motor and an Allison transmission, airbags, heavier, it was a heavier frame. It was the truck that we wanted.
Are we talking dump trucks?
We're talking ten-wheelers, dump trucks.
Thank you, thank you.
During that time, this isn't a Franklin County issue, this is a national issue. Allison Transmission has signed a contract with the federal government, to my knowledge, that has basically pulled them out of the free market and entered them into feeding an enormous contract with the federal government. So Allison has no longer providing transmissions. That has been the holdup, not just for us, but for several other people who are trying to purchase equipment at this time. I know there's been lawsuits that have been filed over this. I know that Allison actually did stop working on the federal contracts and go specifically to build a few transmissions. We thought at that point, we would possibly be able to move and go forward with this, but we were so far down the line that we didn't actually obtain that level. So we are still waiting for it. Several of these transmissions went to big market areas, several went to small. So what MHC has done is they have contacted us and reached out and asked us to sign another contract in hopes that we could go around this roadblock and try to get some of these smaller municipalities that have transmissions where they can go buy them and get it going again. Everybody's trying that. So the odds of that actually happening for Franklin County on special-order trucks are very, very small. So we have reached out to other opportunities, and we've spoke with Dave Williams down at Wichita. He works for Master Tech. They were smart enough to see this coming, and they purchased about every transmission that they could prior to this event actually occurring. So they are basically one of the only suppliers in the Midwest that have Allison transmissions at this time. The problem is, they can't meet our spec. Rather than having a Cummins motor, and this is where I may need you, Kirk, they sell a Packard motor. They've got a contract with a Packard. It's less horsepower. In the past, I know we've had some, they've had some injector issues. Why don't you come up, Kirk, if you would? We've had some minor injector issues with them. They're not what we wanted, but they are available. If we buy, if we would remove the contract that we have with Phil Conley up at MHC in Olathe, and withdraw from it, because they violated the contract, those trucks were supposed to have been here October. If we can get out of that contract, I think what I would like to do today is get your permission to try to do that, and then attempt to obtain all five of those trucks at the same time through Dave Williams with Master Tech. They would have a Packard motor. You can explain, Kirk, a little better than I can, the differences on what we would be looking at.
Before Kirk jumps into that, though, you might tell him about the seven-year warranty.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, one of our concerns with Dave has been the fact that we know some of the problems with those motors. And we've negotiated with him to the point where they have agreed to pay for a seven-year warranty on all parts that aren't replaceable, movable parts, for seven years, unlimited miles, for anything that would cover motors, injectors, anything like that. That cost savings, if we did all five trucks and they pay for the warranty, that cost savings exceeds $91,000 on those trucks. If we would just buy one or two from them, then we would again have to be responsible for the warranty. You're basically saving $18,000 per truck that they would pay you for that warranty.
How do they compare financially, per truck? What we had, we were under contact with?
It's a little difficult to look apples to apples, because Dave had trade-ins, and MHC's not interested. Or actually, Master Tech is not interested in our trucks. MHC was going to give us roughly $50,000, $60,000 trade-in for our two older trucks. But we had scheduled $330,000 per truck back last year, so we had 660 set aside that we haven't spent yet. And then the new truck price, if we buy all five of them, would be $347,000 apiece. So you're not, if this went up just $15,000.
But we still have the two trucks, the trucks, well, if you get five, are you going to get rid of five?
We wouldn't, we would get rid of several.
Okay.
What's the main problem with that engine? I mean, like, it's not a Cummins, so what's the, I mean, issues that they have that would arise, possibly?
Early on, from what I had talked to some of the people we work with, and Kenworth was injector issues. And they were having trouble sourcing new parts. Supposedly, they have done a update to that fuel system to where it's not as much of an issue. That was their main concern with them.
And so if the injectors, let's say the injectors go bad, is that something that, like, because it's under warranty, they would take and go fix, and you guys wouldn't be doing injectors and?
My understanding, Sabrina, is that it's only the wear items that are not covered under warranty.
Okay, yeah.
So all the engine, the electrical, all of that, just typical stuff that wears out.
That's absolutely right. It's not the design we would like. The, if we went with the Cummins motor, it would change some designs that were, and that's really the reason we're kind of behind the eight ball on this, is because we had a specific truck with specific needs that we wanted. And that's even pushed us back further, because they're trying to get everything out at this point. If we stick with the contract that we have, I don't know, they can't give us a date when we will get those trucks. It could be, honestly, at the rate that we're looking at it, maybe two years before we would see anything. I'm just throwing that number out there, but it very easily could be. It's not just us that's having the issue. The good news is, both are Sourcewell service providers, so we would get the state price. If we do switch, or if we continue the way that we have it set up now, that Sourcewell savings, along with the warranty that Dave Williams is willing to swallow for us, on those five trucks, that's going to save you over a half a million dollars. It's going to save you $564,230. We had this scheduled in the three-year window to get two, two, and one. The reason we're trying to do this now is because I don't think this is going to go away. And the other thing is, we would really like, in our best interest, if we have trucks that are all similar. They have the same emissions, they save the same filters, all the things that match really helps Kirk in the shop when it comes to putting things on the shelf and keeping the things going, so we don't have to have a lot of inventory when we do it.
It sounds like Packard's owned by basically Kenworth, is a freightliner. But, and I'm sure if they're intent to get everything kind of solved, and I'm sure this, being a newer motor, it's going to be better. But I think miles will approximately, we have on them in six, seven years. What, like the trucks right now, what are we looking at?
Right now, we're averaging between 20 and 25,000 miles a year.
Good.
On the ten-wheelers we're running currently.
What are our old trucks? What year are they?
The earliest are, we got them in 2014, but they're early '15 models.
The reason we're kind of leering on this is we've done this before with some cat motors that were not quality, and we went a different direction, and it cost us on the backside. I think these, I think they've worked the bugs out of several of these things, Rod. I don't, you know, I know they're not, yeah, I don't know that they're, if we're getting what we want, it's not exactly fitting that criteria, but we're to a point where it's better than nothing, and we're going to have to have something pretty quick.
The person I talked to that was just a trucker, said that you would probably be good as long as you didn't, wasn't running over 400, 500,000 miles.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the way you're talking, you're looking at under 200.
Right, and we would, again, probably be looking to switch them out again in another seven or eight years.
And then we'd have a good trade value at that point in time.
Correct, correct. There are some hidden costs too. I mean, we wanted airbags. We can replace an airbag for less than $100.
About $160, $170.
And now, the new design on these trucks have pucks instead of air, so we can't actually raise and lower the bed when we dump, when we're trying to load them, they can't lower them down a little bit. And the other thing is, those pucks are, how much does it replace one of those?
Ballparking for my parts guy was about $700, $800 bucks.
So there's certain things that are going to cost us more on the newer truck that we really aren't thrilled about. But I think, under the circumstances, what I'm asking today is to give me the opportunity to try to get out of the contract that we have. I don't want to sign another contract with them at this point, and I would like to have an opportunity to investigate the possibility of purchasing five. I've had several discussions with Derek, and Janet came in this morning early for me to talk about it. And I think the overlook is, we can do it. It's going to deplete our equipment fund, and we may get into our 26 budget a little bit, but we didn't really have anything else on the agenda for those two years, other than a water truck, and we can bypass that. And the other, we don't use it that often. And the other thing is, we've got some blades that are coming out in the next couple of years that we're going to have to build that back up to cover.
You talk about some of the costs going forward, but we also have some real but unknown costs if continuing the way we are. Those trucks are.
Yes.
Radically giving us big repair.
We started with five trucks in this event. They worked all night. I assume we're still going. But yes, the consistency and the reliability of what we have right now is diminishing rapidly.
Getting some big repairs every now and then? Do these have the spreader equipment, blade?
Yes.
Heavier floor?
Yes, better bed, heavier floor. There's some, there's some good things to it, it's just not what we really, really were hoping for. But I think it's, it's the best.
It's better than zero.
It's better than the alternative. It's better than the alternative.
The two, the only thing that you guys communicated to me, and these are big things, it's the Packard versus the Cummins, and then the puck suspension versus the air suspension. Outside of that, are we content with the other specs on the?
That's your call. There's some design differences. There's some design differences in the back. There's certain things that are different that we'll adapt. I mean, it's not what we exactly want. There's nothing there that's a deal breaker either. I mean, I.
I will tell you, commissioners, getting out, they've already breached, as Jeff said. They've breached the contract by not delivering, so I'm not worried about getting out of that. Janet and I will prepare a more full financial analysis of how we would recommend paying for this. Jeff, you effectively said as much, but we would like permission to have Dave Williams prepare us an actual contract that we can bring back in, that you guys will review and approve after having received a financial recommendation from us. So this is the first of a couple discussions, but wanted to fill you out first, so.
If it works out, when can we get these trucks?
I talked to Dave just this morning about it. They actually have one that they are working on that's going through the assembly right now, and it could be our first truck. And then he indicates that he will do his best to get one to us every month until we have all five. So we have it within the next six to eight months.
Be ready for next winter.
Be ready for next winter. Yeah. And again, there's, this, we would have trucks to trade in, this is, we would have stuff that we're going to alleviate some of the stress that we are going to put the budget through. There are certain things, there's a few vehicles that I've talked with Justin and Rusty about that we would like to maybe, you know, roll into other pieces of equipment and utilize for certain things that we plan on doing in the future. But the majority of that is, we would be able to sell and get rid of some trucks to help that offset this cost.
Any other questions?
Tell me if I'm wrong, didn't we, during ARPA fund deals, were we going to pay for three trucks out of ARPA fund?
So you guys allocated $660,000, and he has that, and that's being accounted for in this. But we only budgeted for, we were only planning in the Equipment Reserve Fund to do two. So you, we would essentially be paying for two out of the Road and Bridge Fund, which is where that money is from the ARPA fund, sitting.
Okay.
Waiting for this contract to come through. And then we had two budgeted for the Equipment Reserve account. But essentially, we're asking, we're asking the Equipment Reserve Fund to pay for another $350,000 that we weren't expecting to pay out of there till next year. And trying to be diligent to make sure that we have enough funding to try to do the motor graders that we have next year too. So we are trying to make sure that we have everything covered here. We're cautiously optimistic that we can, that we can do all this within Jeff's current funds that he has, both from the reserve transfer that was done last for '24, and the reserve transfer that we have planned for '25. So that's the numbers that we're all putting together. Like Derek said, we've looked over that. We are still working out all the end-of-the-year stuff. You know, we still get more bills in in January and February that go to the previous. previous year, so we're all, we're finishing up all of those things and we want to give you guys a comprehensive overview when we bring this back to you at a later time, but those funds are there.
We're really only, over the next year, we're running into possibly getting one more than we planned.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not something we went and bought anyway, you just were doing it earlier.
Yeah, it would have been done in twenty twenty-seven, it was budgeted for twenty.
With the way it's going, you may not, if you don't do something, you may not get nothing.
Correct, and it, more than likely, it won't match anything that we have if we just get four.
I know you tried hard to go the other direction, but it ain't there, it ain't there.
I think we're headed the right direction, so what do we need to do?
If you all agree with that, absolutely nothing today.
Pretty good.
My only concern would be that you have a bunch of trucks.
Yes, that would be a very.
The nice thing about it, we'll have some to sell too.
We will, yes, we will.
Be a good time of year to do it.
Yeah, we will have, yes, we will have the trucks to sell. I appreciate your time.
Peg, do you want to come up and discuss some propane? Peg's got a plan to, I think, save us some money and I just asked that she come talk you all through that.
Hi Peg.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Good.
Good. It was brought to my attention and I, I've looked at a lot of things in the last four months since I returned, that our feral gas lease agreement out of the transfer station, we were paying a little bit more for propane than what we probably needed to. Our last two loads, I believe, were at like three dollars and thirty cents a gallon.
Wow.
Yeah, but with the lease agreement, we had to use them, we couldn't bid that out through another company. So I got on the phone this week and I contacted MFA and their tank rent or lease is really cheap. It's like a dollar per year per tank, but we pay the going rate for propane, whatever it is. If it's three dollars, we pay three. If it's a dollar fifty, we pay a dollar fifty. We don't ever know, but we would be locked into them to do that as long as we have their tanks. I did contact, excuse me, S E K Co-op, and this came upon recommendation from Ottawa Co-op actually, who's one of our vendors. We get our propane for our forklifts from them. And Judd told me that if we contacted S E K Co-op, that he thought we could save a substantial amount of money. What we're looking at with them would be to get two brand-new five-hundred gallon propane tanks, which they supply, but it would cost us a hundred and thirty dollars per tank per year. But we can lock into a price with them for one year at a time. The year runs from August first to July thirty-first the following year. So if we got into it right now, we would get two new tanks, we would get propane at the price of a dollar fifty-five a gallon, and that would run through July thirty-first of this year. August first, we would renegotiate that. They don't think at this point that there would be a substantial increase at that time, but it leaves us open to, you know, look around again if we need to. So, and they would keep us on a keep full basis, so we aren't going out there and reading tanks every month and making sure we're not going to run out.
Propane do you usually?
Last year, excuse me, in twenty twenty-four, we used twelve hundred and fifty-two gallons. I did the math on that compared to what the new pricing would be, and we would save about two-thirds of what we paid this year for propane. And that's including the lease agreement in there too. So, I say, I think it's a, I think it would be a good move for us to go with S E K. I did submit the paperwork, we aren't locked into anything yet, but they have approved us to go that route with them. They cannot get tanks until March, they have to order them in. But what they would do, they would get them, they would go out to the transfer station. We have one at the scale house, we have one down at the shop building, and they would come in and if there's any propane in those tanks, they can recover that out of those tanks, pump them into the new ones, so we don't lose anything there. And then they would top them off and fill them. Other than that, I think that's, that's kind of where we're at with this, this project.
Would you lease up with, with who you have?
I'm sorry?
Would you lease up with who you have?
It's.
Or is it just a?
It's funny, it's just kind of an ongoing lease. I think we've had feral gas for years, honestly. Yeah, but the prices have just gotten out of hand.
I don't know that we necessarily need anything formal, but the, to the extent there's an ask, it would be to authorize us to go ahead and get out of our situation with feral gas and continue to move forward with S E K, with the understanding that come July thirty-first of this year, we'll have the opportunity again to revisit this should there be a price spike through the Co-op.
Right.
Good.
Using our oil heater for the recycling building?
Yes, we are. Yep, as much as we can. We've had to use the overhead heater a little bit during this really, really cold stuff, but yeah, we go through, oh gosh, hundred and fifteen gallons of oil about every two to three weeks maybe? Yeah, so yeah, that's been, that was a good purchase, yes.
Do you have any update on the shredder?
Please don't make me cry in front of everybody. I talked to them last week, they say it will be at least another three weeks. They've had some manufacturing glitches, I can't say for sure, but I think they had some bigger companies come in and they pushed us back a little bit because we're the little guy, but only my opinion. But yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping in the next three weeks that we have a shredder. And the overhead door project at the transfer station, they're getting ready to ship our doors to Kansas City, so we're hoping in the next two to three weeks we'll have that project completed as well.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Derek?
I wanted to just give you guys a little bit of information and an update. Last week, under Sheriff Lastfall and I, attended the National Sheriff's Conference out in Washington DC. As part of that, we had meetings with our elected, federal elected delegation, so we did meet with Senators Moran and Marshall, and we met with Congresswoman Davis, and we also met with Congressman Schmidt, who used to represent this county and the state senate, so he's, he's aware of Franklin County and wants to help us out even though we're really not in his district. Some of the concerns we took to them are with the things that we're seeing coming out of DC now. We wanted to make sure that some of the, that the funding was reinstored, reinstated for some of the programs that we use and that we benefit from. We, not just for law enforcement, but ECAN had reached out to Kyle, knowing that we were going up there, and there was a couple of grants that they, that they, they wanted addressed, and so we did take that up there as well, to those, to those elected officials. Very supportive of what, what we were talking about. Most of those things have already worked themselves out, have not been an issue for us at all. We've not lost any, any of our grant money in any way, so we're just hopeful that everything's going to continue to work itself out in a positive manner. The other thing that it seems to be a hot topic right now that we've been, that we have received a few phone calls on, is what's going on with immigration and that type of reform. We did meet with, with Border Patrol, we met with ICE, with the Enforcement and Removal Operations Chief, and then, and the Borders Czar as well while we were out there, to kind of get a taste of what's really, what is, what is going on. So we've, we've got a good handle on that. There are some things that they are pushing that they want local law enforcement to get involved in and some programs. There's also a push at the state level, there was a legislation that was being proposed that was going to require some things of sheriff's offices. Our state association has pushed back on that, and so that, that legislation was pulled and we're going to be having a meeting about that with our state, with our association officials, to try to get some things cleared up on that. There were some parts of that that were just unsavory, is a good way to put it. So we, we didn't want to be, to be strapped into some of those type of requirements that were there, so we're still following it very closely and looking to, to see what that's going to mean for us. What it has meant is we do have a couple of people in our jail right now that do have ICE detainers on them. That was initiated by ICE, was not initiated by us, but they would be people that, that they would likely be, they would be targeting for based on their, their criminal history and for what we have them in jail for. So anyway, that's really all I have from that, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have anything else? Okay, Pat, Dusty, yeah?
Just, Justin's been up all night with crews, they've been working, we're on twelve-hour shifts, we'll continue until the weather events are out of here. We didn't get a chance to get the parking lot out front, but it, snow came so late, we'll have it cleaned up by this point, that's all I got. And I want to thank those guys for getting up and doing what they're doing, and we had one guy that got back from vacation and dropped his suitcase and ran to work, so appreciate what they're doing for us.
Commissioner comments?
I know it doesn't affect us, but what does Miami County went to on their snow removal line removal went to?
Well, initially they went to daylight hours and I think they've had some pushback pretty hard from the community on it, so I don't know how long they're going to stay with that, Don, but I knew that, I know that they've been doing, just trying to work their employees daylight hours, and I understand that it's a lot safer, but again, when the storms fall like they have and some of the things that have happened, it sure, it makes us look better.
I would say that's something I never want to think about, I mean, you know, like that, we only get, I mean, it's been a little extraordinary even this year, so, I mean, usually not the one time of year, not two or three, but four. Yeah, I did go to a rental city meeting last night and had a lot of things on their agenda, a lot of small things, but like everybody else, revenue is the big one, you know, and they're, they've been trying to apply like everybody, all the other small towns, for new infrastructure money and grants, and they're worried this all is going to go to the wayside, so I'm sure that's a big one with everybody. I did go to a chamber meeting yesterday and our main speaker was Janet, she gave a nice report on what all the clerk does, and I think most of them was pretty at all, you know, and I told them if she went through everything, we wouldn't, that's all we'd get done for the meeting, so you know, but, but I don't think a lot of people really understand what encompasses a clerk has responsibilities for, what they have to do, and plus still work with the community and do other things. I know Chamber Upers did really good in the last, they've always done good, they've really impressed the last couple of years of what they improved their memberships and so forth, and I know they only had like four or five platinum members, now I think they're up around fourteen or fifteen platinum members, other than, and they did talk about the, the new operation up there, the, the doctor's office of course had been expanding and taking over a whole building up there, and, and I think the city is happy with that, you know, happening in their town. And most of you know the truck stop sold up there, T and TA, but they still have their trucking school back in the back, kept that, and they did have a new sign-out yesterday for the new restaurant to start work for very long, so they've always been talking, but it's the first time there's ever been a sign-out for a new A and W restaurant there, so. That'll be in the housing part over there, but I think they had, most of you don't get a chance to go over there very often, but, but it's really looking good and big, and going to go to the second phase. I know Attenbury Homes is doing a lot of homes in wealth, which I'm happy to see that, and they're a big person in the chamber and the community, and everybody's been really happy with, with them doing home building in their community, so that's all I got.
I just had a chamber board meeting yesterday morning. I thought I saw some blurry eyes out there with these guys that have been up all night. I appreciate, I actually appreciate the fact that we didn't get the six to eight, that we, they were telling us that we were supposed to get. My road wasn't bad at all this morning, I was glad to get out, but even if it would have been six to eight, these guys would have been out there and they'd have been out there working, so appreciate you guys always being ready, take care of us. Sheriff, I'm glad to know that you got to meet with our people in Washington. It's good to keep those lines of communication open, they need to remember that we're out here and what they do affects what happens here. That being said, there is a legislative coffee this Saturday for our state representatives, and they have them once a month, this month is, this, it is this Saturday, it is, because of construction going on at the city building, they actually are having them this year at the municipal courtroom at the police department. So if you want to talk to them or at least keep, keep an eye on what's going on in, in Topeka, that's a great opportunity. And again, just to let them know who we are and that we matter. So if you have a chance, stop by this Saturday, and that's all I got.
I don't have anything, any, your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.